All right. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to Engage Clayton Town Hall Meeting. This is a virtual town hall meeting to address the 2020 census. And we are just here to discuss why it matters. I'd like to take this opportunity to talk to you about the 2020 census and why it is so important that we have 100% participation from you, our residents. The 2020 census counts every person living in the United States, regardless of age, race, or citizenship status. Every 10 years, dating back from 1790, every 10 years, we help decide how much federal funding comes back to our communities. There is a dollar amount tied to each resident that is represented on each survey to determine how billions of dollars in federal resources will be distributed throughout the U.S. We receive resources based on census population counts that help pay for hospitals, emergency services, schools, recreation centers in our roads, and so much more. An accurate and complete census helps businesses, community leaders, and elected officials make informed decisions every day. The 2020 census is available to take online for the first time. People can also respond by phone and by the mail-in option. Your responses to this, to the census are confidential, protected, and cannot be shared with law enforcement, immigration agencies, or housing. Just to be clear, let me repeat that one more time. Your responses to the census are confidential, protected, and cannot be shared with law enforcement, immigration agencies, or housing authorities. Remember, everyone counts. Now, without further ado, this afternoon's session is going to be moderated by our Director of Communications, Ms. Valerie Fuller. Ms. Fuller?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you so much, and thank you all for joining us today. Good afternoon, and welcome to the Engage Clayton Virtual Town Hall Meeting. The purpose of the meeting, as Chairman has already discussed, is to share information about the 2020 census and specifically related to Clayton County, and we want to be able to answer questions. We have six panelists today, representatives from the Clayton County Complete Count Committee, our Youth Services Department, and the Census Bureau. With that, I would like to have each one of the panelists please introduce yourselves.
Good afternoon. I'll start. I'm Tim Carter, Partnership Specialist with the U.S. Census Bureau. I'll be talking with you today about some pertinent information.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is Jacqueline Howell, co-chair of the Clayton County Complete Count Committee.
Good afternoon. Breka Johnson. I am also a chair with the Complete Count Committee for Clayton County and Assistant Director for Community Development here at Clayton County.
Good afternoon. I'm Nicole Horn. I'm the Administrator for the Office of Youth Services, and the Youth Commission is a signature program in our office.
Good afternoon. I'm Evelyn Tello, Clayton County Youth Commissioner. Hola, soy Evelyn Tejo, student of the Elite Scholars Academy, and I'm a Youth Commission.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Pham. I'm a 10th grader at Elite Scholars Academy. I'm a Youth Commissioner.
Okay, thank you so much for those introductions. A little bit later-
Jeff Turner, Chairman of Clayton County.
Thank you, Chairman. With that, we're going to hear from our Youth Commissioners a little bit later. So right now, we want to jump into our Census Bureau presentation by Mr. Timothy Carter.
All right. Go ahead and share my screen, and we can get started. All right, so for those of you that have joined the call, we are so excited because it is census time. So you get to shape your future starting here right now by responding to the 2020 census at my2020census.gov. Again, I'm Tim Carter, Partnership Specialist with the U.S. Census Bureau. And today, I want to talk a little bit about the history of the census, what's in it for you, why we complete the census, and also how you can take action from today. So the census has been around for over 200 years, and it is mandated by the U.S. Constitution, Article 1, Section 2, that a population count be performed every 10 years, and that is for every resident of the United States. So that information is used for a few major ways. Number one, it's used for apportionment to determine what seats go to what state at the U.S. congressional level. It's also used for redistricting down to the state and local levels. In addition, census data gives community leaders vital information to make decisions about building community centers, opening businesses, and planning for our future. And more importantly, the budget. Over $675 billion is allocated every single year down to the state and local levels. And so I talked a moment ago about that budget. Here are some of the programs that are influenced by U.S. census data, including Section 8 Housing and Assistance Programs, educational programs, unemployment insurance, entrepreneurship opportunities, family services, food assistance, healthcare, including Medicaid and Medicare, infrastructure, as well as public safety. We understand that some folks have some concerns about completing the census. You want to know, what are we doing with that information? So a couple of things I want to affirm for you today. Number one, your information is protected. Each of us that step into these positions taken oath of office to protect your information, and it is protected by Titles 13 and Title 26. And it does carry up to a $250,000 fine. And so we take that very seriously. Simply put, guys, we don't share your information with the local police. We don't share it with ICE. We don't share it with the FBI. Not even the President of the United States, guys. When we turn over to the report, the report to the President next year, it is essentially a bunch of charts and graphs, but your personal information is always protected. In addition, we never ask for full social security numbers. We don't ask for money or donations. We don't send requests on behalf of any political party, and we don't ask for PIN codes or pass codes. So what's changed is that the census is going online for the first time, right? And we're so excited about it, and you might wonder why online? It's because, as an organization, we save $5.2 billion, and we can allocate those resources to other things to benefit you and the community. But there's three ways that you can complete the census. The first and foremost is online. We want you to go online and complete the census, but we understand that everyone does not have access to a smartphone, a smart computer. So you'll have the option to complete it two other ways. We started to send out a wave of invitations, and which I'll talk a little bit more about on the next slide, inviting you to respond. In that invitation, also give you instructions on how you complete the census by phone and/or by mail. And so if you decide to complete the census by phone, it is offered in up to 13 languages, including English, and I'll show you those numbers on the following screen, and up to 59 dialects with language guides if you complete the census online. So we think we've got it pretty well covered. Here's a list of numbers where you can complete the census by phone. What that means is if you dial any of these numbers in language, you will talk to someone to assist you in completing your census by phone. To the left-hand side is the actual invitation that we started to send out at the beginning of March, March 12. By now, you should have received that invitation. If you've not completed it, a total of four times. So it is us, and it is real, and it's got some specific ID information for you to go online to complete the census. Folks want to know, well, what's changed? How are we impacted under various circumstances? One of the major concerns that we had is, well, how do students who were once away at college, who've been sent home for the remainder of the semester, how are they going to be counted? So a couple of things I want to capture here. Number one is college students who live away from home should be counted at the owner-off-campus residence where they live and sleep most of the time, even if they're at home April 1st. This includes students who are home early because of COVID-19. Students who are living at home should be counted at their home address as always. And then students who live away from home should be counted owner-off-campus, specifically students who live in dorms or students who live in apartments off-campus. They will still be captured under our group quarters operation, which is handled at the dormitory level. So the person over the dormitory will still count those students as if they were still living on campus for April 1st, for our April 1st snapshot. And lastly, I want to challenge you guys to get it done because now is the time. First off, complete your census, right? But I want you to inspire others. Tell everyone. Tell your friends and family, neighbors and coworkers that you've completed your census, and now they should too, and share it over all social media platforms. And what's really cool is we've made it easy for you. There's a partnership site, 2020census.gov, that has things just like what you see on the right-hand side, where you can simply click and post. So I'm challenging you to complete your 2020 census today to help shape your future and to be counted. This concludes my presentation. I'll turn it back to you, Valerie.
Thank you so much, Timothy. Very good information, very important information, that everyone be included. We want a 100% participation rate for all of Clayton County, and not just in Clayton County, but throughout the world. Now let's go over to our frequently asked questions. It's Q&amp;A time, and so we're going to, I'm going to present several questions and have our panelists respond to those questions accordingly. Are we ready?
Sounds good. Let's go.
All right, so one of the questions that we received is, "I've already completed the census survey online once, but I keep receiving the survey in the mail. Do I need to take the census a second time?" Tim, I'll have you answer that one.
All right. The answer is no. If you received the confirmation at the end of completing your census survey, you are good to go. We might have just been so excited and wanted to send you the information again, but you are covered. You are good. Encourage someone else to complete their census.
Good deal. Thank you so much. So no, don't take the census a second time. But we do encourage you to tell someone else to take the census, right? So the next question, when is the last day to actually-
Exactly.
-the census? I'm sorry, I'm going to repeat that question. When is the last day to take the census?
Breka, did you want to take that one?
Sure. So this is an interesting question, and I appreciate the resident that asked it. Due to COVID-19, of course, the schedules, as you've seen from Tim's presentation, have been pushed back so that we can accommodate, you know, the loss of time and folks on the ground being able to help folks get the census completed for those who have not done it. The census timeframe is opening up. We have about, we have several more months, I will say it that way, to get everything done, to ensure that we get an accurate count. We are, I think, Tim pointed this out earlier, we're about 50.8%. So we still have another 49.2% to go. We still have to continue to work. So our encouragement to you today is to take it today. But yes, due to COVID-19, the dates for obtaining all of the census information has been pushed back. So great question. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And again, we are pushing to get that 42.9% of people to participate in actually taking the census so that everyone is counted. The next question is, "I've completed the survey. Why am I being contacted again, or will I be contacted again? Is that possible, Tim, Breka?"
Great question. I'll take that question, Valerie. So if you've completed the survey, and someone, and it depends on what you mean when you say being contacted again. If you're specifically referring to the mailers, sometimes it's just an error. Now, once we've collected said information, if there is an issue with what you've completed online, meaning that you've left something blank, or if you mistakenly listed your son's age to be older than your husband, then you may be contacted for clarification purposes. We do have built-in mechanisms in the system that will recognize an error, in which case we may contact you by phone. Please, so if you do receive a phone call from the census, that is possible, but that will be in an instance where you made an error on the census survey, and we're contacting you to clarify something.
Next question, "How will my answers be used?"
Well, I don't even want to steal the thunder because my experts here probably could answer this question better than I, so, Breka?
Absolutely. So the information, the data that's received, we utilize the relevance, for relevant statistics, so that we can, the federal government can determine where to place that money. The whole idea is to keep that confidentiality in regards to the census information, but it goes specifically towards specific needs in our community that have statistically been said that that is those services of what we need, like youth programs, like emergency home repair services for our veterans and our elderly, for our college students, grants to go to school, and for our youth, our younger kids, for our youth programs, and the ability to have rec programs and things like that available to us, and the myriad of things that Tim listed earlier. So please, please, you know, definitely go to the website, learn more. The location where we have for you to continue to submit questions, feel free to continue to submit whatever new questions come up as a result of your going through the process to answer the census or through your circle of 10, any questions that come up as a result of that.
And I'll even add, just from personal things, that I want to see improve in my community. I'm tired of riding down the street and riding over potholes. So if you're like me and you're someone who wants to see the streets look a lot better, complete your census. That's how we make change happen in the community. If you and your children are attending a school where they're in trailers, the classrooms are overcrowded, and you want to see it better over the next 10 years, complete your census survey. You are making such a big change in your community by taking five minutes to complete your census survey.
Absolutely. Thank you, Breka. Thank you, Tim. How will my information be protected? I know we talk about how important it is for people to take the census, and we've talked about and explained that it's going to be confidential, but how do I know my information is safe? How do people really know that their information is safe? What can we do to ensure people that when they do take the census, that the information remains confidential?
I'll take that question. So first and foremost, I talked a little bit about in my presentation, how it's protected, where that falls in the Constitution, and so I'll go back. Title 13 protects your information. So once you turn it over to us, it cannot be shared. Again, each of us that step into these positions taken oath of office. I also understand that some of you have concerns about, well, what about when I completed it online? Where does it go? What about hackers? We've heard it, right? We spent several years before launching this online resource doing test runs. You are protected. It is encrypted. I promise you. We have the best technology to ensure that your information is protected. And once this is complete, even when we turn over the information again, the President receives charts and graphs. That is it. Your personal information is protected. This is for statistical reporting purposes only to determine budgets. But as far as your personal information, you're good to go. You're making a difference, again, right in your own neighborhood by sharing this information, and you can be rest assured that each of us that handle your information handle it with the best of care.
Thank you, Tim. That's a very important piece. We understand concerns and questions that have come about because of that. So who do people contact if they have additional questions, even recommendations or issues or concerns? Who do they contact?
Oh, I'm so glad you mentioned that. So one of the things that's sort of taken place is, as with anything new, you know, someone wants to duplicate, right? So we've seen rumors about, well, how the census conducts itself. When you see those rumors, we want you to share that information with us, and I don't have it right on hand with me, the telephone number, but I can give you the email address. Any rumors that you see, anything that contradicts what you've heard today, you can email us at rumors@census.gov. Again, rumors@census.gov. There's also a number that you can call to report these types of things. I'll share that with the leadership team so that they can cascade that information out to you guys. And there's one other thing I wanted to share. What am I missing? What am I missing? What am I missing? Got the email address. We've got the telephone number.
Can we share that email address?
I'm sorry?
Can you share that email address?
Absolutely. We'll share it. I'll make sure that Breka gets that information into the right hand so that we can share it with those on the call today.
And if I might add, you can, if you hear anything that's adverse to our presentation today and what you've heard thus far through the Census Bureau about the census, please feel free to email us. You can go in through submitting a question and ask the question there. You can put your comment there. That is going to be open for the duration of the census being available to take online and by phone and over through the mail. The Census Bureau Customer Service phone number is 1-800-923- your 5, I got you. 8282. Again, 1-800-923-8282. And that's who you can call if you have questions about, you know, any scan that you're seeing and what have you.
And lastly, I remember, you can go directly to census.gov. We are constantly updating the site with this information. So if you've got questions, or you've received, for example, the American Community Survey, which is an additional survey that some of you will receive if you've not already, that is us, but if you want to verify, simply go to census.gov, and that information is available.
Thank you so much. So our next question, "What is the current census participation rate for Clayton County?" And we may want to talk about some of the historical, the last census numbers, too, Breka, Tim, Jacqueline, to talk about the, we know we are right at half of the percentage for Clayton County, so can you share more information on that?
So I skipped ahead, or excuse me, I skipped the slide, rather, but I wanted to share this slide, so I'll go ahead and do that now. This is our 2020 Census Self-Response Rate Map, which is available to the public. You can access it through 2020census.gov. These are the actual response rates through May 5th. Right now, Clayton County is at 50.8%, as Valerie and Breka mentioned. We are last, guys, and I know we're not last place. The leadership team over at Clayton County tells me we are not last place, and we put in a lot of work, but we need your help. As you can see, we are running really low as compared to some of the other counties. So we've got a lot of work to do, but we can get it done. And if you want to get involved or keep up with participation rates, you can simply go to the link that I provided at the bottom and share this information with the community. Get folks involved. Get folks active so that we can turn this thing around. Did you have anything to add, Breka?
I think you're absolutely right, Tim. You know, we'll move into, you know, some testimonials of folks who have taken it. We'll talk a little bit about what the call to action is today because that's what it's about. It's about getting the information to you and getting a call to action so we know, so we have a direct path to getting people involved, taking the census, so that we can get our numbers up.
That's right. We're part of a large metro area, and we're just stressing the fact that Clayton counts, and we need every single person in Clayton County to be accurately counted in this census. So please, let's all do our part. The next question, "Which cities in Clayton County have the least participation? Can we talk about those different cities? And what we need to do to help ensure that everyone in every part of Clayton County, every city is counted?"
Absolutely. Do you have those numbers, Breka? I know Jacqueline, you've been keeping up. Did one of you want to?
So I can speak on that. I think what I want us to be cognizant of is, and I appreciate the question, but all of our cities have been very much involved in the process, and we will continue to raise our numbers as a county for each city. The information is online, but what I wouldn't want to do is just throw out, well, this city or that city needs to raise their numbers. The county as a whole needs to raise its numbers so that we can get the, because if all of our cities aren't able to do it, and our county isn't able to do it, we still, we still are lacking, and we'll still be low on our, the list regionally and nationally. So that's why the cities have been so involved. And once we, you know, because we've had the COVID-19 crisis that is still happening, but we will still continue to move things forward, we'll be able to put more information out, have more of an opportunity to talk to folks about being involved and actually taking it. So thank you for that question, but it is a county-wide, joint-cities-and-county initiative that all our commissioners, our chairman who was on earlier, and all of our mayors and city managers are heavily invested in.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Breka, so much for elaborating on that. So this is our, I have one more question before we transition into our segment with our wonderful Youth Commissioners. Does everyone in the household have to take the survey?
Great question. The survey is completed by one person in the household, and it should include every living person in the household.
Okay.
All right. I did see a question that was posted in the chat. I don't know if you saw that one. It asks about sample census forms that the cities may acquire to send out to the residents in bulk mailings. Are there sample census forms that cities may acquire to send out to the residents in bulk mailings? Yes, to that question, it's no. There aren't, but ways that you would receive it by now is if you've not completed it, you've already received a paper form, okay? And for those that, if they, for whatever reason, didn't receive it, they can still go online to my2020census.gov to complete it without the sample form. And again, they can still call in over the phone. But in terms of sending out bulk census paper questionnaires, we do not, we don't send those out.
I will say this, if I may. We, for several months, we've had posted a sample census survey. So if you want to take a look at the general questions, we have those at council.gov, and you go under Census 2020, and we have that information there if you'd like to see that before you actually take it.
Okay. Thank you so much. So let's talk about some of our testimonies. I know I personally have taken the census. I took it by use of my cellphone. It took all but three to four minutes, and I think it took that long, as I shared previously with Breka, because I maybe read the questions twice and went back to just ensure that my answers were what I needed and wanted them to be, and that they were accurate. So that was really easy, and I've shared that with my family, my friends. I think it's really important that we not leave out some of our most important citizens, too, which are not just our Youth Commissioners, but the youth in general, you know, people who are not, who are 18 and under, how important it is for them to be engaged, to be counted in the census, too. And so now we have our Youth Commissioners that are joining us. I'll have them reintroduce themselves. They did introduce themselves at the beginning of the segment, but we want to have them talk about their personal experience about taking the census, as well as some assistance that they may have had with their parents or maybe engaging with their parents to take the census. So at this time, we'll have them reintroduce themselves. Evelyn, you can go first, and then we'll talk to Tiffany.
Hola, soy Evelyn Tejo, student of the Elite Scholars Academy, and I'm in primary year with the Youth Commission. Yo hablé con mi madre quien completó el censo. Ella me comentó que para hacer el censo es fácil y sencillo. Las preguntas estaban en español y era fácil para entender. Eran preguntas muy básicas acerca de la familia y en ningún momento se preguntó de mi estado, mi migratorio, mi criminal. Para completar el censo duró diez minutos. Hello, my name is Evelyn Tello. I'm a student at Elite Scholars Academy, and I'm in my first year with the Clayton County Youth Commission. I spoke with my mother, who completed the census for our family. She commented that doing the census was quick and easy. Her questions were all in Spanish, and they were very easy for her to understand. And it basically asked her questions about her family, about her family. And at no moment did it comment anything or ask anything about her immigration status or any criminal background history that we may have. And she took about 10 minutes, really, just to complete the whole census.
Thank you so much. So Breka, Jacqueline, Timothy. We also have, I believe, Ms. Nicole Horn is also on, too. Can you guys talk about your experience taking the census and what you would encourage people to do, including- Can you guys talk about your experience taking the census and, and what you would encourage people to do, including our youth? And how important it is when we're talking about the census that the youth are included too?
Okay, my name is Nicole Horn and I'm the administrator for the Office of Youth Services. And we have taken the census in my household as well. It was really simple to do. We did it on our phones. My husband and I, we sat together. It took us roughly 10 minutes to do it. No personal questions, just basically how many people live in our house. It's just us and our children. And it was that simple. And then Tiffany, if you want to add?
Hi, everyone. My name is Tiffany. Xin chào quý vị, em là tân là pham so vay. Em là học sinh ở Elite Scholars Academy em xong. Vâng Clayton và em muốn khuyến khích tất cả mọi người đi vào bản điều tra dân số năm 2020. Mỗi khi quý vị đã điền ra cái bản câu hỏi, chúng tôi muốn khuyến khích bạn, khuyến khích mấy người trong sớm hoặc là mấy người gia đình bạn, anh em, chị, bác. Những người mà bạn biết để cho mỗi người được đếm vô điều tra dân số. Ở trong nhà của em là ba của em đã điền cái bản câu hỏi rồi. Ba em nói rất là dễ dàng, rất là nhanh. Khoảng mười phút thôi à? Cái số tiền này chính phủ sẽ chia ra cho quận của mình. Những điều quan trọng như thư viện hoặc là những cái chương trình rất là quan trọng cho mấy người trẻ em hoặc là người già. Didn't false that year I think. Basically, my name is Tiffany Pham. I'm a youth commissioner. I go to Elite Scholars Academy. And as a part of the Vietnamese community in Clayton County, I want to reach out and encourage every Vietnamese constituent to go ahead and take the census. I know a big barrier is translation and the census website does have the Vietnamese translation. This funding is essential to the programs that run our county, that help the residents of Clayton County. And we really want to ask that everyone reach out to 10 people that you know.
Thank you so much. So really important, we're stressing that we count every person once, only once and in the right place. We want everyone to understand that Clayton counts. So with that, we're going to have a call to action. And I'm going to have Jacqueline and Breka talk to us about what the call to action is and how every single one of you who are watching this town hall, who are here in Clayton County can participate to ensure that we get 100% participation. Becky?
Thank you Valerie. As you heard a lot of information today, a lot of statistics and we just want to admonish you that if you have not taken your census yet, it only takes 10 minutes for 10 years' worth of funding for Clayton County, its residents, its constituents and its residents to come. Not just those that live here now, but those that will come to this, to the county. So if you haven't, take it today. Breka?
Right. Thank you Jacqueline. I also like to challenge each of you who have taken it to have your circle of 10, the people who are closest to your, your sphere, your friends, your family, Facebook friends, neighbors of yours, please tell them that, reach out to them. For one person, let's reach 10 people to make them aware of the census, the why it matters piece of it that we've explained to you today. And also the benefits that come as a result of taking it. Please note that we, there's a phone number and I'll provide those for, for English and Spanish, actually the Evelyn and Tiffany will provide for you when they go through their translation. So thank you very much.
Ms. Evelyn?
Tờ tật mà ta participa en el ciclo de diez. Una vez que haya completado el censo, comuníquese con otros diez personas que conozcan para completarlo. Pueden ser familiares, amigos, vecinos, cualquiera. Queremos llegar a la mayor cantidad de personas posible. Para participar por celular puedes llamar a uno ocho, uno ocho cuarenta y cuatro, cuatro seis ocho veinte veinte. Esos uno ocho cuarenta y cuatro, cuatro seis ocho veinte veinte.
And now we'll hear from our youth commissioner, Ms. Tiffany.
Chúng tôi khuyến khích quý vị tham gia vào nhóm mười người. Một khi bạn đã điền vào điều tra dân số, hãy liên hệ với mười người mà bạn biết để điền vào những người gia đình, bạn bè hàng sớm. Chúng tôi muốn tiếp càng người, càng nhiều người càng tốt. Cái số cho tiếng Tây Ban Nha là một tám bốn 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 sáu tám hai ngàn hai mươi. Và tiếng Việt là một tám bốn bốn sáu một hai ngàn hai mươi.
Thank you so much. And again, the website is census, I'm sorry, mytwentytwencensus.gov. Please be sure to make sure that everyone in Clayton County is counted. So as we move forward, we're getting ready to do our closing statements and to close out the webinar. I want to start with Timothy Carter with closing remarks. Timothy, can you reiterate and talk to us about the confidentiality portion of the census?
Certainly. So again, we've talked a few times about this and it's because it's important to affirm for each of you that your information is protected. When you complete the census, whether it be by phone or in person or online, know that once that information hits the system, once that information is shared, it is protected by Title 13. Again, each of us that have stepped into these roles have taken an oath of office and we take that very seriously. And it's not for the length of the job, it is for a lifetime to protect your information. So you are safe and secure when you complete the twenty twenty census.
And in closing, Breka, if you will please share with us the ways to take the census.
Absolutely. Just echoing what Tim and others have stated earlier, the census can be taken online. When that's your cellphone, iPad, laptop, personal computer. You can take it by phone with the information that was provided to you. And for all other languages, you can go to mytwentytwencensus.gov for that information. You also will get the translation of the census online based on your, the translation that you need. And you can send back by mail the invitation that was sent to you. Again, 10 minutes, less than 10 minutes for 10 years' worth of funding that helps our communities grow, flourish, new business, economic development, better, greater schools, wonderful equipment, no potholes. So we're always working constantly to address a lot of the, our community issues and concerns so that we can have a better, a higher quality of life.
Thank you. And we'll have our youth commissioner, Ms. Emily. Closing remarks as a high school senior.
Sorry. Có một sinh viên đầu tiên năm học lớp 4. Sẽ kể lại, giúp tài trợ các chương trình que giúp sinh viên như tôi trả tiền cho trường đại học. As a high school senior, being counted helps fund programs that assist students like me to pay for paying in college.
So in closing, we want to thank you for joining us for today's town hall. We know we've shared a lot of information about why the twenty twenty census matters. It does, every single person in Clayton County counts. But we need you to put into action what you've heard today. We did this so that we could share information, answer questions and hopefully increase the percentage to 100%. We're halfway there, just over a little bit of halfway there. But we want 100% participation because it's that important to the Clayton County community and to the world as we get ready to take this, complete the census survey. So thank you for joining us. Remember that we want to count every person, we want to count every person once and in the right place. Thank you for joining us for today and please look to the ClaytonCountyGA.gov website for more information specifically on the Clayton County census.